Hey, how are you?
Good. I just came down here to get your word.
Oh, I thought you wanted to take over.
I don't. No, I'm just here, I'm here late anyways.
Oh.
I knew you were coming. They're gonna get you up first, I heard.
Yeah. It's really just...
I think they're at the chair. That was a great time. My kind of freaked out because I was... They're not being judged.
Well, children, that's why I come back on.
I hope they won't block me, you see.
What is that for?
They're freaking me out. I would think if they have, because they usually say they're gonna block us. So you know which order you're gonna go in. Yeah, it's an easy one for us, too.
And it's nice to have you here.
Yeah, once I think we're allowed, I can go comment. Okay.
Dingfelder? Gudes?
Here.
Maniscalco?
Here.
Citro?
Here.
Miranda?
Here.
Carlson? And Vera?
Here.
Thank you, sir. We begin with item number one. Yes, sir?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, do you want to pick up the walk-on now or you want to wait till after?
Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening. I am Vanessa McClary. I'm the Housing and Community Development Manager, and I am here to start the public comment period for the annual action plan. Each year, we come and we present the annual action plan. The first meeting is when we will make it available to the public. I will actually be loading the document. You didn't get a copy yet. I'll be loading the document tonight, and it'll open up a 30-day comment period in which the public can make any comments on what is proposed in the plan, and we have to respond to those. At the end of the public comment period, we'll come back before you and tell you any comments that we've received, along with accepting any additional comments at that time, and that will be at the July meeting. This is actually happening earlier than traditionally. Usually, we do it in June, but in July, you only have one meeting, and so we had to move the data, and that's why the document is not fully prepared yet, and I do apologize for that. He said... Oh, there it is. Oh, sorry. But I can't see it, okay. So with the annual action plan, we are letting the public know how we plan to spend the federal dollars that we receive. So this will include CDBG, home, HAPWA, and ESG funding. It is the one-year plan that ties back to the five-year plan. We will also be going out to different community meetings. We typically go to East Tampa and West Tampa community meetings to go over the action plan with them. So we started the action plan process actually back in March, and one of the requirements of the federal government is that we have to do RFPs. So we put out RFPs for public service, for housing counseling. HAPWA, we are already under three-year contracts, and ESG were under three-year contracts, so we didn't have those ones out. And we also put out for CHODO and public facilities. We did that in March. In April, we had, early April, we had technical assistance workshops, and that's when we are helping people to understand how to fill out the application and submit. They were due April 26, and at that time, we do a review. Staff does a review for threshold items, and then it is passed on to subject matter experts who actually do the review of the applications and the recommendation. We then take that recommendation, and we present it to the mayor for approval, and then we present it to the city council and to the public. And that's where we're at today, at May 23. You will actually do the final approval before it goes to HUD on July 18, and it is due to HUD by August 15. And then the contract year starts October 1. In this action plan, there are actually some rollover dollars, so some of the contracts would actually be able to start ahead of the action plan. So we received 3.1 million in CDBG, 1.5 in home, 3.9 in HAPWA, and just over a quarter million in ESG funding. We are still waiting for our final numbers on the ship, but the expectation is that we're going to receive about 439 unless the governor does a line item veto. And these are just the definitions of what is CDBG and what it can be used for: home, ESG, and HAPWA. The priority needs that were identified from the community meetings when we were putting together the consolidated plan was housing rehab, homeowner assistance, rental assistance, new construction, supportive housing operations, public service, and economic development. Like I said, the comment period will be from May 23 to June 23. We will comprise all of those and add those comments into the actual action plan. At the meeting on July, we will be able to accept additional comments, and we will respond back to the public. So for this year, the action plan will include 14,765,000. And if you remember on the previous screen, I had 8.9 million that we're receiving in federal funds. The other funds are actually rollover dollars from previous years that have not been spent. So in terms of the housing programs that make up that 7.1 million, we're looking at 345 in housing counseling, a million for a homeless solution center. CHODO, we're actually going to do 1.75, and that is to build new single-family homes. Down payment assistance, we're going to put 1.2 million. Tenant-based rental assistance is where we are housing homeless individuals. That's 800,000, and owner-occupied rehab is 2 million. So that is the overview, and at this point, we're opening up for comments. We try to get public participation because these funds, even though they are given to the city, it's still our responsibility to make sure that we get public input when we are putting the document together. And folks can send comments to me, they can come down to my office, or they can email.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from council members or comments? Councilman Dingfelder?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The homeless solutions center, a million dollars worth, what's the... Some of us newer comers, what is that?
That is to build another facility to house homeless individuals, provide them with supportive services. As we're moving families, we try to rapidly rehouse, putting them straight into an apartment and provide them services there, but there are some individuals that need to be in a facility for a couple of months so we can get their situation stabilized before we move them on.
So this is like a transition...
Yes, transitional housing.
Is that... You said "another." Are we operating one right now?
There is one operating currently in the county, and we wanted to have a facility within the city limits.
Okay. So I assume the one in the county, they're doing, the county is doing, or...
Yes, the county is funding them.
Okay, and...
And the county...
A million dollars is a lot of money, but in terms of building and operating something, a million dollars doesn't sound like so much, so...
Yeah.
Tell me more about that. Is there other funding sources?
Yes.
What's that?
The county is providing a million dollars. They, and this is for Donning Family Services, which is formerly Alpha House. They had a facility in South Tampa, and they're, sorry, not really South Tampa, but they are moving to Armenia, and so they're moving all their operations and expanding in that location.
So that's the one we're talking about?
Yes.
The million dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. And then the other part of that is owner-occupied rehab. You and I met a little bit yesterday and chatted about the rehab generally. $2 million owner-occupied rehab. Tell us a little bit more about that, if you would.
So we have a lot of homeowners that need to have repairs done to their properties. There was a time when, if someone got older and needed extensive repairs, we might encourage them to move to rental where someone could take care of the property. Because our rent rates are so high, we find that we have to help folks to age in place. And so we have $2 million to put out to help low-income families to make repairs to their homes. They have to own the home for five years and be at 80% of median income or below to qualify.
And what's the typical repair that's needed in terms of, what are we doing? Putting on roofs and...
Roofs, floors, plumbing, siding, windows. We typically don't do gut rehabs, but we may have to make that change and do larger rehabs. The program limit currently is 25,000, or if someone is disabled or special needs, we go to 35,000, and we were just hitting major systems.
And are these straight grants, or is there a repayment?
So if, the way the program is changing, if they need repairs over 30,000, they would have to repay those funds, but up to 30,000, it's a grant.
Okay. And is that done through, what's that place over there, by the Davis Island Bridge? Helen Gordon Davis started it?
Oh, Center for Women. They did not respond to the RFP. We had two response...
They used to do this service with us, right?
They still do the service using state funds. They're not doing the service with our funds.
And so I assume, so you put out an RFP, you have a new vendor, or what?
Yes, we are doing contracts currently with East Tampa Business and Civic Association and CDC of Tampa, were the two respondents, and we awarded to both.
And they do the qualifying and the training and the whole nine yards?
Actually, the qualifying is done through our office and Salida's house.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
Councilman Gudes?
Are these federal qualifications, or are these our qualifications? Do you see these funds for rehab?
They're federal and ours. Which, so the 80% of area median would be a federal requirement, and the five years is because we don't want to encourage anyone to purchase a home that's in need of rehab. We have a different program for that.
That's the only fund we have for rehab versus what we have now with the federal government with this standard?
Pardon?
The fund you have now, with the 80%, that's the federal guideline. We have no other fund within our city repertoire that can help somebody who's under that, because, you know, in some communities, some people still are not going to be able to meet that threshold, and we have a lot of homes in certain areas of the city that are blind that need rehab. So I'm just wondering, is there another program that we have within this proposal, or this is all we have?
That's what we have.
Anything further from...
We're happy to accept general funds.
Councilman Dingfelder?
So going back to this notion of paying back, I don't doubt the need, and I think it's great that the city and the feds, state, and what have you can fulfill this need, help people have a habitable place, and as you say, age in place. I think that's great. What I wonder about is, is, okay, let's say somebody's x, x number of years old, and they fix this up, and then they pass away within a year or two, and the family gets it, the house, and then they sell the house, and now they've got this rehab house that we just put in.
Oh.
You got a solution to that?
Yeah, sorry. I didn't mention that we do put a lien on the property.
Yeah.
And so if the owner was to pass before the lien had expired, then the family would either pay it back, or if the person, if the family was income-eligible, they could assume the loan.
Okay, so I asked before if it was a grant or a loan, so...
Sorry, I misspoke. It's a deferred loan.
Okay. And how long is the lien for?
It depends on the amount of funding that we provide for them. And I guess I would say that one of the things that I want to do this year is to come and meet with each of the council members individually, one to go over the action plan, but two, to prepare for the workshop on June 20. I'm putting together a binder that will go over, but I don't think in a workshop we could go through the whole binder, so I thought I would come out and meet with each council member individually and answer those questions.
Okay. So just for tonight, because I've got everybody just waiting for the answers. Just kidding.
So...
So, yeah, so how long, the lien is...
10 years. 10 years up to 30,000, and then... It's 15 to 45? There's a schedule. Sorry, and we're only just now going above the schedule, so I'm...
And so have there been instances where this has happened, where the family gets it, they sell it, the lien kicks in, we get paid...
Yes.
...to satisfy the lien?
Yes.
And we've gotten our money back?
Mm-hmm. We have a...
Is it no interest, I would assume?
Right. We have a housing portfolio specialist that manages our portfolio, which is about 60 million. Mind you, that most of those are deferred, but we are monitoring. We verify annually that they still live in the home, that they haven't rented it out. We have had individuals who have rented the house out and the loan converted to paying. If it converts to a paying loan, there's 3%, but if the homeowner died, we have had some people assume, we've had some people pay off, we've had people refinance to take our lien off of the property.
Great, thank you. Anything further from council members? Thank you, ma'am. Okay, and thank you very much. Next, we have a walk-on item from Parks and Recreation. Where's our attorney? I don't think we take public com... Oh, you know what, actually? We probably, yeah, you're right, you're right, we do. Let's, should we take public comment after the presentation? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Good evening, council. My name's Brad Suter. I'm with Parks and Recreation. Asking, a request for you to consider a memorandum of agreement between the city and Ecosera Institute, as well as the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission. This is for environmental restoration work at the lately-spring tidal basin. What we have found over the past few years with some heavy rain events, we've had some erosion issues there that have not been able to been subsided. Fish and game, as well as one of our consultants, recognized that, and some money's being made available to fix that environmental issue. What is happening is erosion is going into the lower basin. It's shallowing out the basin, and the work that is proposed is to do a small retaining wall, a series of steps, not only with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission, but also U.S. Fish and Wildlife Commission is also going to put in money. So it's a little complicated. I apologize for the awkwardness of this walk-on, but it's the processes of attorney review and the agreements and how it changed in the end of their fiscal year is requiring us to do this action now tonight.
Any questions from council? None? Okay. Is anybody here from the public here to speak on walk-on item, which is hereby referred to as item number two? If so, come forward, please. Okay, being none, I guess this would fall under Parks and Recreation, and Councilman Gudes, do you feel comfortable moving this, sir? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gudes. We have a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Enjoy your drive back to District 7.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, now we have about 12 minutes until 6:00, so we will order, ask council to go into recess, and we shall return at 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Sorry.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I think there may be some folks that wanted to make comments on the action plan.
I apologize. Thank you. My sincere apologies. It's okay. Is anybody here to make comments, public comments on item number one? If so, please stand up. Okay, seeing none, then we will stand in recess until 6:00. Okay, this council meeting is called into session for the evening. Roll call, please.
Dick Felder. Gudes. Maniscalco. Citro.
Here.
Miranda. Carlson.
Here.
And Vera.
Here.
And if everybody who is here who plans on testifying tonight or speaking, please raise your right hand, stand up in that order, and prepare to be sworn in.
Can you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing above the truth?
Chairman O'Conne, item number two. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And thank you. Now, we have had a request for number five to be moved up to the first item this evening. Any objection from council members for that? I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mary Saminiego from Planning and Design and Development Coordination. The item on your agenda is REZ 1949. It's a reserving request from Seminole Heights, single-family residential and Seminole Heights multifamily residential to Seminole Heights commercial neighborhood.
Good evening, council members. David Hay with your planning commission staff. I have been sworn. The one and only zoning case this evening is in the central Tampa Planning District, more specifically, the Seminole Heights Urban Village. It also, the subject site also falls within the southeast Seminole Heights neighborhood. There is transit service on East Hillsborough Avenue and North Nebraska Avenue. That's the Metro Rapid Service and Harts Route 34, and the site is not within an evacuation zone. Onto the aerial. The subject site is right here in the center. This is I-275. We have East Hillsborough. This is Nebraska. The taco bus is over here, like a block to the east. The Starbucks on Hillsborough is about a block on the other side of the interstate interchange to the west. You can see south of the subject site is predominantly single-family detached, while to the east and north is mostly commercial, right along the corridors. And then, of course, you have the interchange and the exit next to the subject site. Onto the future land use map. The subject site in red, and all this red that heads east down East Hillsborough, that's the community commercial 35. Directly to the south of the subject site is the residential 20, and then it goes down into a residential 10 further south. South on Nebraska, you have some community mixed-use 35, and that pink color is continued over west of the interstate interchange over toward Central and Hillsborough. The request is to that Seminole Heights commercial neighborhood. The subject site is located at a major intersection within an identified urban village, and is located within a recognized community node as outlined within the Greater Seminole Heights Vision Plan. Proposed Seminole Heights CN zoning is less intensive than the existing zoning categories located to the north and to the east of the subject site. Overall, with any proposed development meeting the requirements under the Seminole Heights Form-Based Code, the proposed rezoning would provide for a development that would be comparable and compatible with the existing development pattern, while also being consistent with the long-term development pattern anticipated under the community commercial 35 future land use category. Based on those considerations, the planning commission staff recommends to you this evening that the proposed rezoning be found consistent with the provisions of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mary Saminiego, for the record. Here's a zoning map that shows the subject property in the surrounding area. The subject property is in green, as I stated previously. It's currently has split zoning with Seminole Heights multifamily residential and single-family residential. They're requesting for the entire property shown in green to go to Seminole Heights Commercial Neighborhood. As far as existing development pattern and existing zoning, there's commercial general to the north, some single-family residential to the south, commercial intensive over to the east on both sides of Hillsborough Avenue, and then there's the interstate, and then commercial uses continue to the west on Hillsborough Avenue. The site is a little over three acres. It meets the dimensional criteria for the Seminole Heights Commercial Neighborhood zoning district. Because this is a Euclidean rezoning district, there's no site plan to review, nor any waivers to review or approve. They would be eligible to develop the property with any commercial neighborhood use and comply with the Form-Based Code of Seminole Heights if approved. Saying that, the Development Review Compliance Staff has reviewed the application and found the request consistent with the City of Tampa Code of Ordinances. Do you have any questions for me about this application?
Any questions from council members? Councilman Gudes.
That property, isn't that the Seminole Heights Church?
Yes, sir. It's a Baptist church.
Is it still an operating church?
Yes, sir.
Anything further? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant here for item number five?
Good evening. David Williams, 301 Harbor Place Drive, Tampa, Florida 33602. On behalf of the petitioner, Seminole Heights Baptist Church, this is a request to rezone the church property from CH, SHRM, Seminole Heights multifamily residential, and SHRS, Seminole Heights single-family detached residential to CHZN, Seminole Heights Commercial Neighborhood. The eastern portion of the property, the flats on Nebraska Avenue is currently... See it now, but it had so earlier. It's Zon CI. We're not asking, that's not part of this request, but it's still owned by the church. This property contains a church building and connected ancillary building that was built in 1948, and has approximately forty-eight thousand square feet. Behind the church along Talaferro Avenue is an old fire station built in 1924 with about thirty-three hundred square feet. And these structures are going to stay the same. No plans to move them, change them in any way. Also, the property has 217 parking spaces. It's a very large parking lot on the site. The reason for this request is that the current residential zoning classification does not allow church. allow church as a permitted use, and the petitioner would like to correct this discrepancy such that the zoning matches the current use of the property as a church. The other, you know, the other positive would be with this neighborhood zoning, the church could operate other things like a daycare, other things that would be consistent with the church operation. Right now, it's residential. This request that we've made is the least intensive request to the SHCN. We're not asking for the commercial intensive zoning classification, trying to find the least intensive use classification that can keep us, keep the church doing what it's doing, which has been operating for, I'm told even before this building was built, since the 20s, so a long time. The DRC staff has determined that this rezoning request is consistent with the City of Tampa Coding Code of Ordinances, and the CC-35 Future Land Use designation under the comprehensive plan allows for this, this would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. In addition, as mentioned earlier, the Planning Commission has reviewed this request and found that it, it's consistent with the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Also, as mentioned, this is Euclidean zoning, so there's no site plan, there's no plan to renovate, modify the existing structure, add structures. This is merely an ability to rezone it to be consistent with the current use, long-term use. So we would request that the city council approve this rezoning so that the Seminole Heights Baptist Church can continue its long history in the City of Tampa and Seminole Heights. So if you have any questions, I'm trying to make it simple, this is what we're trying to do. We have Pastor Brent Adams is here, along with quite a number of parishioners that are willing to speak on behalf of this rezoning request.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Councilman Dingfelder.
Just historically, how, when, and why did that become residential, multifamily, residential, single-family? Because it seems like when, when the whole Form-Based Code Seminole Heights thing switched over, that this would have gotten more of a neighborhood-type religious use designation anyway.
Right. What I was told, the, I think this was done around 2007, 2008, I think when Seminole Heights was, categories were set up. But the church doesn't have records of, you know, I think there was some conversation by the apostle letter that was sent about it.
It looks like Mary, Mary might have an answer for us. Did you have an answer, Mary? I'm sorry. Thank you.
It's okay. Under the previous zoning, this was an RS district and a RM district. So what they did when they created the Seminole Heights zoning, Form-Based Code districts, they kind of mirrored what the Euclidean standard zoning was throughout the area.
So it was...
Applicants, I believe, property owners could have specifically requested changes to individual properties. Apparently, that didn't happen in this case.
So we sort of created a non-conforming use in that, in that large rezoning process, I guess?
Well, there, it's, it's not really non-conforming. A place of religious assembly is an allowable use, but you have to go through the special use two process, which takes about five months and requires city council approval.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone further? Okay. Thank you, sir. Is anyone here from the public willing or wishing to comment on item number five? If so, stand up and come forward. And if anyone here from the church wants to address us, now is your time to do so. And please state your name when you begin.
I'm Brent Adams, pastor of Seminole Heights Baptist Church. Like you said, we're just here just trying to get our zoning to where it looks like any other church in the neighborhood, any other church in the City of Tampa, especially when it's been here almost 100 years. And so we just, that's all we're doing. So that's all I got.
Good deal.
Thank you, Pastor.
Stephen King, a trustee and deacon at the church, just here in support of the, of the rezoning request to, you know, get it in line with the standards that we would expect for a church and so that we can, you know, support our long-term, you know, goals to continue as a, as a church for, for the next 100 years and, you know.
I have a question. Do you get more jokes about being the writer or the congressman?
The writer, the writer. Thankfully, not the congressman.
Probably, I was, I agree with your sentiments. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anybody else here for item number five?
Second.
We have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor? Any opposed? Councilman Dingfelder, do you feel comfortable, sir, taking item number five? Sure. Thank you, sir.
If I can find the description. Hold on. Okay. We're working backwards tonight, though. Item five. I move, follow rezonings 19-49 for first reading and ordinance rezoning property in Genoa vicinity of 801 East Hillsborough Avenue and 5315 North Taliaferro Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida. And more particularly, it's drawn in Section 1 from zoning district classifications SHRM, Seminole Heights Residential Multifamily, and SHRS, Seminole Heights Residential Single Family, to SHCN, Seminole Heights Commercial Neighborhood, provide an effective data.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor? Any opposed?
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption to be held on June 27, 2019 at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody. Okay, now we move onward to item number two, please.
Good evening, council. Ryan Manassi, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. Item number two is for the application AB-21912. It's located at 1925 East Sixth Avenue. The current zoning on the property is YC-7, mixed use, and the future land use is CMU-35, community mixed use. The Development Review and Compliance Staff has reviewed the application and finds it inconsistent with the applicable City of Tampa land development regulations. Should you approve it tonight, minor corrections to the site plan are needed between first and second reading. The petition before use requests in special use approval to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for a small venue beer, wine, and liquor consumption on premises and package sales off premises consumption. The land use, according to city records, is for an office, business, or professional. The proposed uses are listed as bar, retail sales, and office, business, or professional. The total AB sales area is 2,177 square feet, which contains 1,905 square feet indoor and 272 square feet outdoor. The required parking for the proposed uses is 1 per thousand square feet of gross floor area for office, business, or professional, and 3 per thousand square feet of gross floor area for bar and retail sales. This requires a total of 12 parking spaces for all the proposed uses listed in the special use. The site is providing four onsite parking spaces, which is a 67% reduction from the required 12 onsite parking spaces. I do have a correction for this, the staff report that was presented to you a week ago. DE-119-138 is the correct number. It has been approved, and that's for the buffer reduction. That was between the commercial establishment and the residential that was directly to the west. So that design exception has been approved for that reduced buffering requirement. The property is within the Ebor City Urban Village, and the distance separation requirement is 250 feet from other AB sales establishments. The site plan states hours of operation will be consistent with Chapter 14. Also, the site plan states the sales area shall not be located within a parking or loading area or space, and all permits issued after April 1, 2011 shall be kept onsite, a copy of the adopted ordinance and an associated site plan for the alcoholic beverage sales permit. As stated, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination did find it inconsistent, and that's for Section 27-132, the reduction in the required distance separation from other AB sales establishments. It's, the requirement again is 250 feet, and they're at 165 feet. And also, Section 27-283.7, which is the reduction in the required parking spaces from 12 spaces required to the four provided, which is again 67% reduction. Transportation planning also found it inconsistent due to 27-283.7. The waivers before you on the site plan and presented tonight are, come from 27-132-283.7, and that's to reduce the required number of parking spaces from 12 to four, 67% reduction, and Section 27-132 to reduce the required distance separation to other AB sales establishments from 250 feet to 165 feet. The closest AB sales establishment in the urban village, which is again the 250 feet from other AB sales establishments, is the Dirty Shame located at 1927 East Seventh Avenue. It's zoned YC-1, and it holds a four CLP alcohol beverage license, and it's at 165 feet away. General planning and transit findings found that it's located in the historic, located in historic Ebor City and the Ebor City Urban Village. As well as just included with the transit findings, I found that there's a City of Tampa paid parking lot directly north of the subject property. That doesn't relate to the requirement for this waiver, but I just wanted to present that for you tonight. Other code criteria and city council reference for consideration come from Section 27-43, and that's our definitions, in that we define the AB classification, which is the alcoholic beverage sales classification of beer, wine, and liquor, and also the proposed uses, the bar, the retail sales, and the office, business, professional, including in that the proposed special use before use defined as a small venue, which is a commercial establishment with less than 300-person occupancy, which sells alcoholic beverages. Other sections for your consideration are Section 27-129, which are general standards, as well as 27-132, regulations governing individual special uses. And this is a vicinity map of the area. The subject property is outlined in red, right here. The closest AB sales establishment, just to give you some outline to it, would be the Dirty Shame, which is located right here. The top picture is the north face of the structure that's built. The picture below is from the south face of the structure, and this is the onsite parking right here, the four spaces that are provided. Top picture is facing, on the north side of the building, facing west down Sixth Avenue. And this would be where we were talking about the reduction in the buffer requirement between the establishment as well as the closest residential use. But that design, design exception was approved. This is looking north in front of the subject property. This is the City of Tampa parking lot. Seventh Avenue is up here in the closest AB sales establishment. Directly east is the, the multifamily use, as well as, here's a top picture showing south on 20th Street and then north on 20th Street to give you some idea of the area. The site plan wasn't included in the staff report, as well as a corrected version. There'd be some minor modification to the language that I sent to you previously, just because the design exception was approved after I sent the staff reports. I'll make sure that any, you know, guidance that we want to include on this between first and second reading would be added. And TPD did do a report on this, and they found no objection to the request. They did state, however, that the site, the concern for lack of parking. And staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Councilman Dingfelder.
There we go. There you go, sir. So the property, the subject property is outlined in red, and the Dirty Shame would be up here on Seventh Ave. That's the closest AB sales establishment. And just for your guidance, the way it's measured is from a straight line from the closest point of the alcohol beverage sales area, which would be this north portion, in a straight line to the property boundary. So that property boundary would give you that 165 feet.
We waived the...
That's correct.
Okay. So I've got, I've got some initial concerns, and I look forward to hearing from Mr. Bentley to allay those concerns. But right now, you showed some pictures of residential properties proximate to this. If you could point on that aerial, where would those residential be?
So these would be the pictures that you're referencing to that I showed, and this would be directly to the east, the structure right here.
Okay. So that's all residential, that L shape?
Correct. There, it's mixed use, so there's residential on top, and I believe there's some office and other uses established there.
Okay.
Again, it's not a distance separation requirement for the special use, it's just, you know.
And then, I assume this is part of the record. If not, we need to make sure that it is. Counsel received a letter from Unique Property Services, Mr. Kessler raising concerns about, I guess, his clients at Fifth Avenue Villas Condominium. Are you familiar with Fifth Avenue Villas Condominium?
I'm not. I've received a letter and it's filed in the case. It's for your review.
I would assume, I guess, that's the ones you just pointed to...
Right here.
Either there or along Fifth Avenue, perhaps.
I believe they may have somebody here tonight to speak. I'm not sure on that, so.
Okay.
They were guided to make sure they're here for public comment.
Did all council get this as part of their petition?
And it should be in our, at least, at least it's in mine, I should say. Does everybody have this? Take...
And if I could inquire of Mr. Bentley. Mr. Bentley, are you aware of that letter that's been made reference to?
Orlando, you got it?
Yes, sir, I have.
Thank you. He says yes, that he is.
All right. Well, maybe Mr. Shelby will...
This would be a nice opportunity, Mr. Chairman. This would be a good opportunity, then, to receive and file all documents that have been available for public inspection in city council's offices at this time. You might as well do it for all the forthcoming hearings as well.
Okay, do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by, oh, it was Councilman Gudes. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, counsel.
So anyway, the, in that letter, they indicate a concern about the hours as well as exterior music. You had mentioned hours, you said, I think, consistent with Chapter 14, which, what, is 3:00 a.m. or something like that?
So that, the agent for the application has requested hours be consistent with Chapter 14. Chapter 14, which I do have a copy of, just in case, I figured you guys may want to see it.
But the neighbor, but the neighbor is suggesting midnight.
And that, that's between council and the agent. We can, of course, amend the site plan between this reading and second reading to put down certain stipulations that you may come to agreement on tonight.
Okay. Is there any, I'm sorry, is there any reference to, they also expressed some concerns about music. They say they didn't want any outside music.
So standard would be City of Tampa would be consistent, oh, the, we have a noise ordinance, and that's what they'd be held to?
That's not my question. My question is, is there, is there reference, specific reference on the site plan to exterior music?
No, sir.
So under the code, arguably, they could have it if they have any exterior space because the code does allow it.
If they meet the noise regulations established by the city code already.
Right.
It's not a code requirement.
That's an enforcement issue.
Correct. You can, of course, you know, we've had in the past where, you know, there are notes put on site plans, no amplified sound or whatnot. Of course, we can add that, but for the review of the special use, it's not a requirement for that.
Okay. And I want to make sure that all council has this letter at some point.
Yep. And will, if, Councilman Dingfelder, may we pass your copy to the ones that don't? Do you mind? Or Councilman Gudes?
Either, either that, or I'll just ask somebody to burn it.
Boom. Thank you, Willer. Councilman Gudes.
Let me make sure I just got this correct. So this a bar plus package store, or is this going to be just a bar?
So in, in front of you tonight is the special use. The special use requested is the small venue. Typically, a bar would not have, well, a bar cannot have package sales. So the applicant came in as a small venue, beer, beer, wine, and liquor consumption on premises, so you can drink on premise, as well as package sales. That's the outline of it. We typically have them lock into proposed uses. That way, there's a little more control on the site plan of what uses they're getting permitted through this process. The proposed uses per the applicant were listed as bar, retail sales, and office, business, or professional.
Anything further? Councilman Citro?
Going back across 20th Street to the multifamily, the businesses underneath, do you know what time they stay open till?
I do not, and that wouldn't really be part of the review, just because the residential uses is not a part of the distance separation requirement for the special use, it'd be the closest AB sales establishments.
I, thank you. I'm just trying to find out what type of businesses are under there, what time they stay open to, how much is going to be affected by this, this application.
I understand, and the correspondence that you're referring to, as far as counsel received from the, the association or the property manager, I did advise them to make sure they're present at this public hearing to answer those type of questions. Thank you.
Anything further? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is applicant here for item number two?
My name is Mark Bentley, 401 East Jackson Street, Tampa, 33602, and I have been sworn. I represent, uh, Site Real Estate, the owner of the subject property. In terms of compliance with city codes, the project is obviously constructed, you saw the, the photos that Ryan presented to council, and it complies with the Barrio Latino design standards. So the, the final permit associated with this project is what's before you tonight. The Barrio approved the subject property with seven parking, four parking spaces, although seven were required for just pure office. So, just to clarify a couple of points, is, um, there's no distance separation requirement for multifamily. And as indicated, the condo project located to the east is zoned commercial, the land use is mixed use commercial. And also, the bottom floor is a, is a, I think, a hybrid of office and retail, is my understanding. I don't know the specific uses. So there's no separation. With respect to the other establishment, I think in the history of me doing this in city council, there's never been a distance waiver that wasn't necessary in Ebor City. Uh, I just point out to council, that's on Seventh Avenue in the entertainment district. It's 165 feet away. We actually have a petition signed by Alan Kahana, the owner of the Dirty Shame. He doesn't obviously have a problem with that. And also in terms of separation, we have the CSX railroad line and Sixth Avenue. So, that's a situation there. In terms of onsite parking, just to get back to that, because there's really just one waiver that we, other than the separation, uh, that we need, and that's the parking. The Barrio Latino recognize that in order to facilitate redevelopment of these small lots, especially south of Sixth Avenue, and this, this property fronts CSX railroad line, is that it's really not reasonable nor practical to require onsite parking for these small lots. And I'll show you in a second, is that, um, there are a number of private and public lots available for parking. And the, the emphasis on this project, the potential or projected customer base, this is going to be more of a neighborhood, south of Seventh Avenue type use. It's going to be a wine bar and a coffee bar at the subject location. Um, kind of to deal with this noise issue, is we would, we put it, we put it on our wet zoning, uh, survey. It didn't make it to the site plan, but on the record, we would like to self-impose or suggest a, a condition for council's consideration, that the, there would be no outside amplified music. We're talking about three or four small bistro tables and there's 272 square feet. It's not in the public right away. It's on Mr. Minsburg's property. So as I mentioned, this project's oriented toward the local community, where you can go in in the morning to have breakfast. There's going to be two floors of office above it. Then it'll be a wine bar, and if you want to buy a, buy a bottle of wine or, or liquor, you could do that in, uh, in, really, the target market is the neighborhood. Uh, that's why in terms of parking, we don't really see the necessity onsite, is a lot of these people are going to be walking. And I think the way of the world in Ebor City, even on like the social nights, I guess you could call them Friday and Saturday, there's a lot of ride sharing going on. I'd like to show you a couple photos right now. This is the site plan that, that's before you and it's approved by the Barrio Latino. The outside area would be this area that's shaded right here. And that's 272 square feet. Here's photos of the building. This area I'm pointing to right here, that's where these three or four bistro tables would be located. There'd be no outside amplified music, as I suggested. Just another photo of the exterior. Now here's a good shot, and this was raised by Ryan in his staff report on page three, I think it's the second paragraph. I'm looking from Seventh Avenue down toward the, the subject property and you can see the City of Tampa parking lot right here, and then our client's property. So you have this massive parking lot right next door, that's available to customers. What I've done here is, I've identified every public and private parking lot that's available to just the general public within a 500 lineal foot radius of the subject site. Now, I think a lot of you can appreciate, when you go through this lease issue, Mr. Miranda, where people are leasing offsite, the city code says, they could consider any parking that's located within a thousand feet. And here again, I'm just showing you 500 lineal feet, what's available for any customer for the establishment. So we think the waiver is justified. If you have a par- parking lot right outside your front door and all that parking available. Now, because the subject property's located in an urban village, there's no distance separation, as I think I mentioned, from residential property. The only separation required is from other ABs. Now, um, Mr. Minsburg, he's got a really successful track record and there's been some, like, media articles and he's actually redeveloped a elementary school in St. Pete and converted it to lots and things like that. But here's a project that got a lot of notoriety from Mr. Minsburg and it's called Casillas and Cuarto. And what he did is he rehabbed some old cigar worker houses and actually built some new ones that resemble them. They're located on Fourth Avenue. So, he's made a huge commitment to Ebor City and this is kind of his dream project, so to speak. And after Mr. M- Mr. Minsburg makes a few comments to council, I've got, hopefully this afternoon, what we did, and we think it's pretty significant, we have a letter in support from the old Historic Ebor Association and signed by their president. And I, I presented that to council this afternoon. But we've got a lot of letters in support. We've got a petition with about 36 names. We've got Daryl Shaw, Joe Capitano, Alan Kahana, a lot of stakeholders who have, you know, like a really huge investment in Ebor City and they're looking for this kind of development off Seventh Avenue, something different for actually the people who live there. So Mike, want to take this opportunity to address council?
Do I need to move this? Okay. Cool. Uh, good evening, council. Uh, thank you for letting me present to you this evening. Uh, my name is Michael Minsburg, located in 1925 East Sixth Avenue, Tampa 33605, the building that you are looking at. Um, I'm obviously the owner of the building and, uh, I've had a real estate business in Ebor City for 10 years. Um, I've lived in Ebor City in the past for about three years and it was always my dream to own my own building in Ebor City. Uh, I've been involved with some pretty significant projects all over the Bay Area and I can tell you, none of them have as much heart in them for me as this one does, because this is, this is like home to me. Spend more time, more waking hours here than I do in my own home. You know, the history of Ebor City is to have mixed, vertical mixed use within them. I mean, if you go down Seventh Avenue, or even within the neighborhood, there's always been first floor, some kind of retail, sometimes office, people living above, and it's just a mixed use neighborhood and that's what I think makes it special and it's actually part of the historic fabric of the neighborhood, the butcher neighborhood, uh, and the Barrio fight to protect. Uh, I chick, I picked Sixth Avenue for my, my building for a few reasons. One, I couldn't afford to buy a lot on Seventh Avenue. But the second one is that it's a very unique street where it, it's a difficult to develop street, because it is on the CSX line. So residential going there is, is, is difficult, um, because you've got loud train going by you several times a day, which, you know, interrupts our, 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 uh, meetings occasionally, but it's part of the character and charm that we enjoy. I operate my own business on the second and third floor and, and I'm proud to say it, because frankly, I never dreamed of this coming out of the recession, the real estate recession. We have over 17 full-time jobs, uh, sorry, we have 17 full-time jobs in those two stories. Uh, I never thought this building would turn out like it did. I kind of got carried away with the architects and the Barrio giving their input and spent a lot more on it, but I'm, I'm super proud of it. When I walked in to that first floor space for the first time, which was originally, my plan was for office in there, I just said, you know, this is something that, that I have to share with the neighborhood. Um, I want to share it with the community. It was a big open space and you've got some real good street interaction. Um, and that's kind of where the idea came from. And I, and I brought my wife in there and some friends and, you know, Ebor is, is really a community and we just kind of wanted our opportunity to host our friends and be proud of our building and the business we're putting in there. So to, to just kind of conclude, uh, my thoughts and, um, and, uh, what I want to say, I just want to tell you a little bit about what, uh, give, sorry, give you a brief description of, of what, uh, the business is, which is going to be called the Ebor Beverage Company, which is really a cafe, coffee, wine bar, where you can come have, uh, a cup of coffee with the community, with friends, work with during the day. It's not meant to really compete with Seventh Avenue. It's meant for the locals who sometimes want something a little bit more quiet than Seventh Avenue, which is why we're totally fine with no amplified music. But, I'm just going to read this description of who we are, because frankly, my manager can put it better than I can. But, "Our vision for, for the Ebor Beverage Company is to provide a polished and welcoming environment that will cater to the social and professional needs of the Ebor locale. A celebration of our community, style and flavor, we aim to provide a popular selection of regional beverages and foods to help expose the rich, explorable neighborhood that we've grown so proud of." And that, that's really what it is. Just a place for community to come hang out, um, and, and have something to be proud of. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
So, um, what I'll do is, before we conclude the festivities, I'll get the letters in support and petitions to Marty and we can get those received and filed. And also, I'll just save any, any questions or, unless you have them right now for rebuttal.
Any questions from council? Counselor?
The hours of operations, I'm going to clearly, what is the intended hours of operation?
Well, right now, we put on the site plan and it seems like it's been consistent city council policy, that it'd be consistent with chapter 14, which would be the state limitations. Councilman Miranda, which would be 3 o'clock?
That was consistent with one council member in the past. Let, let's clarify.
Okay. Well, here's, if, if that's a concern of council...
I'm just bringing it up.
Okay. Right now, I'm just saying it's...
I'm bringing it up with those in the, in this form here.
It's...
In the letter, uh, from the, that, that, I understand legally, uh, they, they have a right to write a letter, but legally, i- it's not have to do with the, with the rezoning of the alcohol. They're talking about in paragraph three or four, they're about, uh, the establishment staying open no later than 12 o'clock, midnight, and no music can be heard outside the establishment.
Yeah, here's...
I'm just bringing it up.
No, I understand. Maybe I should address this on my, this, during the course of my presentation here, is that, when I saw that letter, which I just, they didn't notify us, there was, there was some, any concern, you know, for several months, be that as it may, is that, they weren't necessarily concerned with the sale of alcohol. They want to limit this man's business hours. And if we start going down that path, where, you know, especially to compete in Ebor City, some of these margins are really thin, they, some of these businesses live and die on these special events. And to turn around and say, we want the guy across the street to close at 12, because we came here first, no, we're consistent with the development pattern in Ebor City. The condos came in and they're probably a little more out of character. So we don't, we think if council goes down that path and limits the businesses' hours of operation, the next business coming in, you've laid the groundwork, the precedent's been set, okay? You might as well amend your code, because now other property owners are going to be dictating...
I, I didn't want to debate, but I'm, I'm going to say this.
No, no, I'm just giving my philosophy.
No, no, I understand that. And I'm not upset or anything else, but let me say this. Ebor City historically was what, it was a neighborhood, period. Done and done with. The immigrants that came in, those that we want to keep out now, are the ones that came in and built Ebor City. They built the Italian Club, Centro Turiano, Cuban Club, all the clubs. They, they started two things that no one ever had. They had affordable health insurance, called Mutual Aid Society. They had all that that they created themselves. So Ebor City was actually a little city within city. Then came the downfall. The express waves, the things moving out, the old wooden buildings were dilapidated due to lack of funds and termites having hunger. And guess what? People moved out. That, that's face reality. That's what happened. Then, it was the renaissance of the artists. Everybody was happy they were there, with low rent, everything else was fine. All of a sudden, progress came back to Ebor City. And there was three things in Ebor City before the Greco administration moved in. Tumbleweed, prostitutes, and a lot of police officers. That was it, over there. And to everybody's, they had to take credit for what Ebor City's come back to be. So then we go back and Ebor City and look at it, and if it wasn't that there was a mixed use, it would have survived. It was at one time going down again, even with all the entertainment area, until the mixed use came in and you have an enormous investment. Not only, I'm not talking about this individual or this home that he's in, but all over Ebor City, there's been hundreds if not thousands of homes being built, apartments or renovation like your client has done all over the, the area. And those are the things that held it together. Then your city came in and put two parking garages in Ebor City and made it for affordable for people to come in and park and have a nice time and enjoy the Renaissance and join the restaurants and the bars and everything else, which is fine. And, and I'm not trying to be a lecturer, I'm not, but I'm, I lived there for so many years that I, I think, even though I live in E- in West Tampa, I think I'm still in Ebor City. So when I look at that and I, and I sit back and, and, and let's face it, all laws have become, and I'm not, not about this subject matter or this zoning matters, all laws have become kind of liberal. It used to be you had to have a certain amount of parking, or they wouldn't even look at it. Then came the idea, well, there's a parking lot over there, I use that as my building. Even though your presentation mentioned the parking and mentioned there's adequate parking, I agree with that. It doesn't specifically say how many cars are there at what hours of the day. And that's what bothers me, that part. Because if that parking lot is full, then this business is going to go down, his investment's going to go down, and I'm the guy who put him down. And I don't want to do that either. So I'm trying to find out my, my medium line where I can at least facilitate the individual who's making an investment there and the residents who live around there to come to some applicable agreement. That's what I'm looking at.
What I, thank you very much for the explanation. Um, it seems that, if hours of operation is a concern of city council...
I didn't say that. I said, I asked that question. And, and let me clarify the hours of operation. There are many areas in the city that strictly have come to a different hour of operation because of where they're at. So I didn't create that, they asked for it themselves.
I understand.
I don't have the right to create that.
What I was going to say, then I'll wrap up my presentation, is if the hours of operation are a concern of this council, we've already made an accommodation, we believe, in terms of the prohibition of amplified music on the exterior, which was set forth in the condo association's letter, okay? However, if the hours are a concern, that's something we will consider, you know? So, we've given some thought to that realistically. We know, you know, which way this could go in terms of the hours, but, um... I'm, I'm pretty much done, unless you have any questions.
Councilman Dingfelder and then Councilman Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Thorough, thorough presentation as always. Um, yeah, I mean, you, 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 um, you sort of said what I was hoping you'd say. Um, and, and what's interesting is, and I'm not testifying, Mr. Shelby, but what's interesting is, is, uh, uh, I have a little wine bar right, uh, a block of my, a block and a half from my house on McDill. Um, and, uh, they came in for rezoning and, uh, there were hours of operation issues raised by the adjacent neighbors and that sort of thing. And ultimately, a compromise was struck, because as Mr. Minsburg said, and he's, he is a good man, as, as you indicated, but, but, a- as he said, this sounds like more of a neighborhood-serving operation. That's his hope, I think. He's not looking for the tourist crowd, you know, and that sort of thing. He's looking to serve the, the people who live there, or maybe wo- workers, you know, that sort of thing, who, who might come by there. Um, and I think that's great, because I think that probably is lacking, um, in, in Ebor. So, but then again, like it or not, you have residences, I believe, across the street on 20th and then down around the corner on, on Fifth. And, and they probably, for better or for worse, they, they moved there, they know what they're getting on Seventh Avenue. But I think that, the reason I asked for this overhead to go up, is there's, as far as we can see, there's no other precedent, uh, in the Fifth, you know, Fourth, Fifth and Sixth Avenue areas in terms of, in terms of liquor. Um, and this, this could start establishing a little bit of precedent to, you know, for, for bars and liquors, uh, to the south. And then I think you're going to get into a whole different ball, you know, ballgame, because then you got single family detached as you go into Fifth. So anyway, um, I didn't raise it, the neighbors raised it, uh, Mr. Miranda alluded to it. You indicate, is, is, you know, that, uh, you guys might be open for it. I think we should probably wait and hear from the public to see if there's any other comment and then we can come back to you and...
Okay. Sounds good.
any other comment, and then we can come back to you and see what else.
Councilman Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This question is for staff. I'm looking down the list of places in close proximity, and I see, of course, the residences across the street and all the other bars and restaurants around. Should there be any concern by this council that Phillip Shore Elementary is only 426 feet away?
Ryan Manassi, Plan and Design and Development Coordination. For the special use, too, that's before each night, and the special use conditions, the only distance separations that apply for this would be the closest alcohol sales establishment.
So, no...
I'm sorry, no, one second. Let me not interrupt you, I'm sorry. Finish your thought.
And I was just concerned at the proximity of the school. Counsel.
Counsel, tonight, we've heard several discussions about this concept of a small venue and the distance separations that are in your code. There is no distance separation required because it's an urban village for a multifamily residential, is that correct?
For this case specifically, in an urban village, for this use that's requested, it's only going to be the distance separations 250 feet from other AB sales establishments. Different parts of the city may require different distance separation requirements, whether they be residential or institutional, but for this petition, it does not.
And I understand that council has a concern about that. And Councilman Citro, you raised the issue of distance separation from the school. You understand that the way the code is presently constructed, that is not a criteria to weigh. That does not preclude you, outside of this public hearing, at some point in time from a policy directive, to revisit the distance separations that are in urban villages or small venues. But for tonight's purposes, I would like to instead direct your attention to the general standards on pages three and four of your staff report. Because that is the criteria upon which you have to base your decision, based upon the competent substantial evidence that you have in the record. And what you are talking about now seems to be discussed relative to Sub B, 129, 27, 129, Sub B, number seven, the control of potentially adverse effects generally. And towards that end, Mr. Bentley, the petitioner's representative, has indicated to address the potential adverse effects that council may have identified from the review of the map and the like, and the letters from the condo association, that he has offered to add the no amplified, no outdoor amplified music to the site plan. Again, that is for your purview to discuss based on the competent substantial evidence that you see adduced at this hearing tonight.
Counsel, thank you for your clarification.
Thank you.
Councilman Goots, if you have something to say?
Well, I think, Mr. Shelby, kind of cleared that up, because I was going to ask that concern about the schools. Well, if we start a precedent allowing small venues to be in that area with a school, you answered my question.
The precedent exists by the policy decision that was made when the code was adopted. If that does not reflect the community concerns, it's incumbent upon council to choose to revisit it if it does so. But that is the code as it exists, and your decision now is based upon whether the petitioner has complied with the code.
Councilman Carlson.
City attorney, please tell me if these are relevant questions.
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. I am actually not participating in this case because my condo association is actually right across the street.
Mr. Shelby's taking these questions.
Okay, Shelby, Mr. Shelby, sorry.
Standing in for Ms. Kurt, under the circumstances, I'll do my best.
Okay, please tell me if it's a relevant question. We learned the distance north to another establishment, but what about the distance to any other establishments south of 6th Avenue? Is that a relevant or fair question?
Staff can address that.
Ryan Manassi, Plan and Design Development Coordination. So, the application and the site plans and the surveys that are submitted, will submit a report of the closest. That's within that boundary. That's obviously not the only one. That is the closest, and that's the waiver that's being requested. We typically request or present to you the waiver that has the shortest distance, and then in that encompasses if there are other AB sales establishments in that perimeter. But you have to, we have to locate the shortest distance, because that's what they're requesting here through that waiver.
Okay. And then also tell me if it's a relevant question. We were talking about hours of operation. Are there any nearby that are required to close at midnight? Is that a relevant question?
It would be hard to say. Different, you know, depending on the alcohol establishments that have been before council, or whether they've gone through administratively through a special use one, the hours could be, you know, consistent with Chapter 14, or if they've been before council and they got certain limitations on hours specified on the site plan. Whatever's on the site plan that's agreed upon would be what the establishment will be held to. Just to answer, just to make sure everybody's clear, on the Chapter 14, the hours of operations are 7:00 AM to 3:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, and you can't serve before 11:00 AM on Sunday till 3:00 AM. That'd be consistent with Chapter 14.
And if I could follow up with that very briefly for the council's information. A reminder that whatever is on the site plan runs with the land. It is irrelevant as to who the petitioner is, what the site plan ultimately is decided, is what is controlled for that property.
What does that mean, runs with the land?
It means, means if the...
May I?
Sir?
Ryan Manassi, Plan and Design Development Coordination. It runs with the special use site plan that you would have approved. So, if there is any deviation from the approved site plan, then they could be in violation of this approved site plan per council's, you know, guidance and approval. It runs with the land, but it really runs with the special use that's approved before you tonight.
But it runs with the land, as Mr. Shelby's point, I think, is that if a property's sold or leased to somebody else, then all of these conditions continue on. Good or bad or whatever conditions, they all continue.
That is correct. Now, typically, if they were, let's say they move out and somebody else moved in and they increased it, or they increased the intensity, they would most likely be before you again to do a whole new alcohol petition. Anybody that moves into that establishment would be limited to the proposed uses, as well as the proposed special use, and the stipulations stated on the site plan.
Councilman Citro.
Please, if you can dumb it down for me, if the gentleman here decides to sell the business, it can go from a quaint coffee/wine bar to a full-blown drinking establishment.
That's correct.
And it could stay that way. That's what's going from, that's what's staying with the property.
So, what's staying with the property would be the small venue, the beer, wine, and liquor, the consumption on premises, and the packaged sales consumption off premises. That's the AB classification, as well as the special use that would stay with the property.
Thank you for your clarification.
Yes, sir. Anyone else from council? Okay. Petitioner, were you finished with your presentation?
Well, I thought you were going to hear from the public.
No, that's what I'm saying. I just, before we do that, I wanted to make sure. I don't remember if you were out of time or...
Well, just a couple things. While I have the opportunity.
And if I may, Duane, did they have any more time left, or?
I don't have too much.
Oh, there you go.
Okay.
Feel free, sir.
In terms of community support, I'll get these into the record. We have a petition with 33 owners and residents. One of the residents lives in the condo. His name's Ryan McGinnis. We have a business owner, Kurt Skane's Hall. Property owner next door, in the residential home to the west, David Steiner. Joe Capitano, Alan Kahana. Ebor Properties, who's developing condos down on 5th with Daryl Shaw. Civic Association, I sent you a copy of the letter this afternoon. So, we'd have those received and filed. And then, if you want to address the hours of operation, or if you'd rather hear from the public first, but, you know, I'm prepared to do that as well, so...
Your time, if you want.
Okay. So, what we would suggest is cease selling alcohol at midnight, Monday through Thursday. Not shut the business down, but stop selling alcohol, okay? So, if he wants to sell coffee after midnight or whatever, that's his prerogative. Friday and Saturday, he would cease selling alcohol at 1:00. And then, the major events in Ebor, guavooing, night parade, New Year's Eve, St. Patty's Day, Festo Italiano, that he could be open per Chapter 14, to take advantage, like most of the business owners in Ebor do, of the significant events. That's our proposal.
Councilman Dingfelder. And before, if I may, Councilman, did you...
Yes, sir.
Do you wish to, before, Councilman?
I'd like to address the hours of...
Okay.
If you don't think, then... I'm sorry. I just want to make clear, if, this is Chapter 14, the hours of operation, that if they are consistent with them, they wouldn't be able to limit the hours at 12:00 AM, and then the establishment would remain. Hours of operation would be, well, they commence 7:00 AM to 3:00 AM, and then 11:00 AM on Sundays to 3:00 AM.
You're showing us what Chapter 14 is.
Correct.
They're offering a restriction on that that would be expressly stated in the PD or in the special use.
I don't believe...
And we've done that before in PD, not in ABs?
Well, to be more specific, you can control the hours of operation, but from an enforcement standpoint, it is very difficult for the police department or for any other agency to be able to know exactly what time the alcohol sales is supposed to cease. So, consistently, it's been my observation, as well as my understanding, that in order to be able to allow for the proper enforcement of the site plan, is to have the site plan hours consistent with the hours of operation, and allow for the alcohol sales during that point, because it would not be enforceable to have them voluntarily choose, even if it was on the site plan. I don't think that would be possible to be able to be enforced.
It's on the placard, on the window, the hours to sell alcohol. That's per your ordinance.
Well, as we take public comment, let me take a further look at that.
Anything further?
Anyway, my comment, Mr. Bentley, was I think that's a very, very reasonable offer of compromise, Mr. Minsberg, Mr. Bentley. I think it's responsive to the immediate neighbors' concerns, you know, weekdays to be reasonable at midnight, weekends, what'd you say, Friday and Saturday?
One.
One. I think it's extremely reasonable and fair, and still operate a good, you know, good, solid business plan. And I commend you, I commend you for that. And I hope that legal does not get in the way of a good compromise. Thank you.
Anything further? Okay. Thank you. Now, we proceed to public comment. If you are here to comment on item number two, please stand up, move forward, and you are given three minutes to comment.
Hello, committee, thank you. My name's Roger Kessler with Unique Property Services, and I'm the community manager for Fifth Avenue Villas Condominium Association. That's the residential mixed-commercial community right to the east, or right across the street from the applicant's establishment. The association doesn't have, they don't have anything against the wet zone permit in itself. They just, they do feel, they have some concerns, and they are worried about how it might affect the living, the peaceful living of the residents that are like right across the street. I'm the one who sent that letter to everybody, and thank you for showing and stating that you had received that. Because of the proximity, they're requesting that if any restrictions were approved, that they would become a part of a land use restriction or run with the land if they were approved or agreed upon, because of the fact that they're concerned that if there's a new owner in the future or a new tenant, that they would either change the type of business or just go full blast to a nightclub and just be a lot of noise for the residents and stuff like that. One of the primary things that they're concerned about is the hours of operations. When the developer created the community for Fifth Avenue Villas, again, right across the street, he had in mind to be able to keep a peaceful way of living for the community. So, in the rules, when he initially created the community, he created it so that all the businesses that are there would be open from 7:00 AM till 9:00 PM at night, and they would have to close. They couldn't close any earlier than that. I mean, he wouldn't have had to do that. He could have probably went ahead and let them stay open late and maybe have a bar or something else like that in there. But, so, what they're requesting is, is that the hours of operation for that, for the applicant, would be, to be closed by 12:00 at midnight. And it's just because they're afraid of the overflow, where are all the people going to go after that? We didn't know if it was going to be a nightclub or a bar, or what it was going to be, but it seems like it's going to be a bar. And they were just afraid that the overflow from those people might spread into the community and just have a lot of noise and mess with the, you know, the peaceful living of the people in the community. The second concern was about the hours of operation, I'm sorry, that was the hours of operation. The second concern was about the music and the sound. The association is requesting that there is no sound to be heard on the outside of the bar. Again, their concern primarily about is the peaceful living, the people living right there, and there just being music blasting and stuff like that. And the final thing, in just a second, the final thing, the final concern was about the parking. We saw that, it looks like they only have like four parking places there, and that it, from what I understand, from what the association understands, is that there should be like 12 parking spaces. The commercial properties in there, they had expressed to me, the commercial property inside our association, that if there's only four...
I'll give you 30 seconds to finish.
Absolutely. If there's only four parking spaces being used, that the parking spaces around the community right there would be used up, and those, their customers themselves in our property would not be able to park anywhere, you know? And so, they're requesting that if maybe a sign be erected designating where the overflow parking could be, or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here for public comment on item number two? So, come forward. Okay. Rebuttal, sir.
Okay. Just to reiterate, this is in the record. In terms of parking, there's sufficient parking on multiple lots around here. Also, there's letters in support from these two residences to the west. Mr. Minsberg owns this property here. Those would be in the record, too. In terms of separation, to qualify for that, the Dirty Shame is on Seventh Avenue up here, and what you have is these natural, or man-made physical barriers of 6th Avenue and the CSX rail line from the Dirty Shame. Also, they've signed a petition in support. In terms of noise, you've got regulations that deal with noise. So, if anyone operates here, whether it's Mr. Minsberg or, you know, some future owner, they've got to comply with the noise ordinance. Otherwise, it's subject to code enforcement and/or it's considered a misdemeanor to a county court. So, you know, whether, we shouldn't size up the operator. I mean, I've talked about his good works in Ebor City, but I don't think we should be sizing up. If an operator complies with all the notes and conditions that are set forth on the site plan, along with the general city codes, there shouldn't be any problem. If there is, then there's the risk of that business owner. And then, in terms of the concern of the developer of the condos, I just want to point out that the developer's family owns the strip club on Anamo in Ebor City. So, if anything, you know, would cause some incompatibility or affect property values, it would be that use there on Anamo. So, in any event, I wasn't going to bring that up, but I thought it important at this stage of the game. But we reiterate that we would be amenable to hours of operation, in terms of selling alcohol, Monday through Thursday, we'd cease at 12:00. Mr. Dingfelder's right, you're allowed to deviate from Chapter 14 when you impose notes on the site plan. Your city ordinance also has a requirement that, so the police know how to enforce the ordinance, that there's a placard placed on any place that has a special use permit. It says the hours of, permitted hours to sell alcohol, not to stay open, okay? So, we'd agree to Monday through Thursday, stop selling alcohol at 12:00. Friday and Saturday, cease at 1:00 and then Sunday, you know, 11:00 or 12:00, it really doesn't matter. So, we would just probably stick to 12:00, even though it's probably irrelevant. And that would be to stop the sale of alcohol. And then, as we talked about, the exterior amplified music, there'd be a prohibition on that, that'd be placed on the site plan. It'd also be placed on the placard with the hours of operation. So, that about sums it up. Hey, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Any further comments or questions? And Mr. Shelby, did you have something to say before, sir?
I have a question.
Oh, yes, or Mr. Dingfelder, Councilman Dingfelder?
Unless it's earlier than that.
No.
Okay. Just one additional clarification, Mr. Bentley, and it's probably rhetorical, but in addition to putting those notes on the site plan, you also mentioned about the holidays, the unusual holidays. That would be included on the site plan.
Yeah, you know, I wasn't sure how to deal with that. You know, I gave you a shopping list of significant events, and I don't know if I overlooked one.
I think you'd need to identify them specifically.
Either that, or we say, like we did with Tampa Catholic and the football, we said no more than 10 night events.
Yeah, but who's counting?
Yeah, okay. So, let's go with the ones that, I mean, that I brought up, and maybe between now and next week, if I overlooked one, unless you guys know, you know, that I missed one. So, but it would be guavooing, the night parade, St. Patty's Day, Festo Italiano.
New Year's.
In New Year's, yeah.
And Councilman Moran.
Thank you. I think the placard, I may be corrected. I think it also says the occupancy of the building, so when the fire marshal comes by, they can see it. I think, I might be correct, but I remember something like that.
Ryan Manassi, Plan and Design Development Coordination. So, the AB placard's going to list certain specifications. For this case, we don't really have an occupancy, because in Ebor City, it goes off square footage for parking calculation. Fire marshal will, you know, when they go through permitting to establish these new uses, especially on the first floor, because that's where they're doing this, they're going to come up with building.
It's going to have an occupancy as well as fire marshal.
How many other alcohol zonings are there on 6th Avenue?
Let me see if there are any issues.
So, this is provided by the applicant surveyor. This is typical to, this is where we get the distance separation requirements, and the, the radius map shows the uses, and then they typically list the uses here. So, the alcohol, they did within 1,000 feet, but as you can see, these are the distances for the corresponding addresses. Sixth Ave., it appeared to be that, that was the only one. Or no, I'm sorry, Seventh Ave. was all the alcohol establishments. So, all the other alcohol establishments were on Seventh Ave. within 1,000 feet that they listed.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And Mr. Shelby?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, it appears that council has certain desires, and the petitioner appears willing to work with city council to address these adverse impacts to council satisfaction. That being said, it is my request to ask that city council allow this to be continued to the next regular day meeting at 10:30 a.m. to allow me to, number one, review the legal issues to be able to be certain that council has the ability and authority to do that, because it's my understanding that, A, number one, what is being proposed has not been done and has been rejected consistently. And number two, that, that the code itself may actually preclude that, and there may be language in the code that says that business shall cease at the time indicated on the site plan when alcohol sales stop. I don't have that opportunity to do that flying by the proverbial seat. So, I've spoken to Mr. Bentley briefly at a sidebar. I believe he has no objections to that. He'll do that on the record. Also, it would give Mr. Bentley an opportunity to get those things that you wanted on the site plan to be placed in writing, including all the holidays that you wish to have recommended to be placed on the site plan, so council can have that in front of it when it makes its decision. So respectfully, I'd ask Mr. Bentley to address the idea of a continuance till 10:30 a.m. on the next regular meeting, which would be June 6th.
Thank you very much, Marty. We'd be amenable to that continuance to the next meeting to resolve or investigate those issues.
Thoughts of council on continuance? And I would assume, do we need to get public comment on the narrowly tailored issue of the continuance?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Then, okay. Yeah, do we need a, I guess we need a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that based on the petitioner's request for a continuation along with the city council attorney conjunction with that request, that this be extended to continue this hearing through June the 6th at 10:30 a.m. year 2019.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Goode, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Hey, thanks a lot. Appreciate your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, guys. Okay, onward we go to item number three.
Good evening, council. Ryan Manassi, Planning, Design, Development Coordination. Item number three is application AB2-1913 for the property address 1728 and 1730 East Seventh Avenue. The current zoning on the property is YC1, and the future land use is UMU60, urban mix U60. The development review and compliance staff has reviewed the application and finds it inconsistent with applicable City of Tampa land development regulations. Minor corrections to the site plan would need to be made between this reading and second reading if approved tonight. The property currently has an approved alcohol beverage sales ordinance 2014-18 filed AB2-1405 for a small venue beer and wine consumption on premises. The existing AB sales area is 1,470 square feet, first floor only, which contains 1,460 square feet indoor and 10 square feet outdoor. Also, the existing AB sales ordinance has the hours of operation listed as consistent with Chapter 14. The petition before you is requesting special use approval to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for a small venue, beer, wine, and liquor consumption on premises only. The petition is not considered a change of use, and the proposed use is retail sales with a cigar lounge. The total AB sales area for the proposed petition is 1,903 square feet on the first floor only, which contains 1,893 square feet indoor and 10 square feet outdoor. The outdoor area that is pointed out in the staff report and the site plan after, it's one of the corrections that will be required for second reading, but it's the little entrance to the establishment. The outdoor area would be needed if they wanted to go down the line and get a sidewalk cafe. The property is within the YC1 zoning district, and off-street parking is not required in sub-districts YC1 and YC3 of the original Ebor City historic districts. Also, the property is within the Ebor City Urban Village, and the distance separation requirement is 250 feet from other AB sales establishments. In addition to the listed minor corrections stated in the staff report, the site plan will need to state that the sales area shall not be located within a parking or loading area or space, and it needs to list all permits issued after April 1st, 2011 shall be kept on-site, a copy of the adopted ordinance and associated site plan for alcoholic beverage sales. Planning, Design, and Development Coordination did find it inconsistent due to the distance separation requirement stated in Section 27-132, and that's the reduction in the required distance separation to other AB sales establishments from 250 feet to zero feet. The closest AB sales establishment is Duamichi Restaurant, which is zoned YC1. It's immediately next door to the west of the property, the subject property. It holds a four COP, and it is, again, zero feet away. Some general planning and transit findings found that Hart Route 8 typically runs weekdays from 4:40 a.m. to 11:38 p.m. and weekends from 6:15 a.m. to 11:40 p.m. The property is within the Ebor City Historic District and the Ebor City Urban Village. Code criteria for your consideration and reference, again, come from Section 2743, that lists alcoholics, the alcoholic beverage sales small venue definition, which is a commercial establishment with less than 300 person occupancy, the AB classification of beer, wine, and liquor consumption on premises only, and the proposed use of the retail sales with that cigar lounge use as well. Sections for you to review and consider, consider as well are Section 27-129 General Standards, as well as Section 27-132 Regulations Governing Special Uses. This is a vicinity map showing you the highlighted area in red. It has both addresses listed, which is 1728 is the smaller portion, and 1730 is the larger, but part of this establishment went into the other address, and that's why both addresses are presented in this, this presentation here. Here's some pictures of the front of the establishment. This is the outdoor area. They're literally splitting it with the establishment here. That'd be the 10 square feet that was referenced in the staff report. Again, the front of the structure. Subject property to the rear, the alley. This is the property to the west. And 1730, which is right next door. The top photo shows a south view on Seventh, oh, I'm sorry, that would be not south, that would be east on Seventh Ave., and then east end of the block where the, the structure ends, and there's a parking lot there. Staff has provided a site plan in the staff report that was presented. There are the minor corrections that are listed in the staff report, as well as a marked up site plan that would be required between first and second reading. Additionally, some of the notes that are required for the special use conditions that are requested here tonight, showing the outdoor area and such. And the TPD report had no objections to this request. Staff is available for any questions that you may have.
All right. Any questions from the council? Nope, seeing none. Do we have the applicant?
Victor DeMile, De Mountain Associates, 4925 Independence Parkway, Suite 195. I'm here representing the applicant. Mike Sinkin Nagy, it's an Italian name. Mike and his mom have owned and run and manages this little cigar store for the last half a dozen years. They have beer and wine now. They have had beer and wine for the last half a dozen years. He also employs about half a dozen cigar rollers that make custom hand-rolled cigars that he actually sells, not only in the store, but he has people buying the Tampa handmade cigars literally all over the world come to buy his cigars. So, it's a great little place. It's a small, a very small venue. It only seats about 20, 30 people. And like, he just wants to be, it's, it's on Seventh Avenue, so it's not, it's not a, it's in, it's in the heart of the Seventh Avenue Entertainment District, where people walk from door to door to have a drink or enjoy a cigar or whatever. So, he wants just to simply have the option, as King Corona did just recently with a prior council that had beer and wine for many years and decided to go with full liquor, because as you, as you can imagine, people come to a bar or restaurant, and some, one person wants a beer, another person wants a glass of wine, another person wants a rum. So, Mike would just like to have that opportunity. We've agreed to meet all the standards and requests between the first and second reading. And just as a note to the council, the, the waiver, distance waiver requirements on, it's, it's impossible to meet a distance waiver requirement on Seventh Avenue because you have bars and restaurants one on top of the other. So, it makes sense in some parts of town. It doesn't make sense in others. So, it is what it is. That's what the code says. So, I've been doing this for a long time, and almost every AB, almost every AB request that comes before you is gonna have the inconsistent label because there's no perfect place. Tampa's been laid out for 150 years, and there's no perfect location in the City of Tampa for a bar or restaurant, and that's just the way it is. So, if there's any questions, we're here. I like to make it quick and simple and easy, so we don't spend the rest of the night here. So-
All right. Any questions from any of the council members?
We ask for your approval.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item, item number three? Seeing none. Councilman Dingfelder?
Just for clarification, I was reading through the staff report and listening to your presentation, the, we're not talking about any type of package sales at all, correct?
No, no. It's consumption on premise only, correct.
On premise only. Okay. That's, that's it. Thank you.
And if you grant, he does have a unique situation if you, that if this is granted, that in front of his little place, they buy a separate cafe permit, which came online many years ago. I think maybe yourself and Minnesota, some council, previous councils allowed cafe permits to be, which he has, he has now for beer and wine.
What, the cafe permit being what, out on the, on the sidewalk?
On the sidewalk, yes.
But, again, just on premises?
Right. Strictly on premise, correct. Yeah.
On the adjacent premises?
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
How about, how about-
Which is the way Bernini's does, and I'm trying to think of some other restaurants on Seventh Avenue. They have it, Bernini's comes to mind, and I'm trying to think of some others.
Former Green Iguana, whatever that is now.
Yeah, correct. Right, right.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Anybody in the public wish to speak? No?
I have personally spoken to all the neighbors and all the adjoining businesses and the neighborhood association. Everyone's in favor, and nobody has any objections.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda, with a second from Councilman Cetrro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I believe it is that, Councilman Goode.
File number AB2-1913, public hearing, orders being presented for first reading consideration, orders approved, special use for S2 for alcoholic beverage sales, small venue consumption on premises only, and making plot of tract of land located at 1728-
Second.
And 1730, East Seventh Agglanter in Florida, as more particularly described in Section 3, provided that all owners or parts owners in conflict are repealed. Repealed owners number 2014-18, providing effective date.
We have a, yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Councilman Goode, if you could also include as part of your motion, the changes that have been agreed to by the petitioner that need to be made between first and second readings?
Correct.
That's fine. If you could just accept, Marty, I said it.
Accepted. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Goode. We have a second from Councilman Dingfelder. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? No?
Motion carried, with Viera being abstinent vote. Second reading and adoption to be held on June 27th, 2019, 9:30 a.m.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the final item of the evening, which is item number four.
Ryan Manassi, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Item number four is application AB2-1914, located at 3924 West Spruce Street. The current zoning on the property is CI, commercial intensive, and the future land use is RMU100, regional mixed-use 100. Development review and compliance staff has reviewed the application and finds it inconsistent with the applicable City of Tampa land development regulations. Should it be approved tonight between first or after this reading, minor corrections would be required at second reading. The property currently has an approved alcohol, alcoholic beverage sales ordinance 2012-92, filed V12-213, for a small venue beer and wine consumption on premises and package sales off premises consumption. The existing AB sales area is 18,713.9 square feet, which contains 11,089.78 square feet indoor and 7,624.13 square feet outdoor. The petition before you is requesting a special use approval to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for a large venue beer and wine consumption on premises and package sales off, I'm sorry, package sales off premises consumption. The proposed uses are restaurant, microbrewery, light manufacturing, warehouse, retail sales, and office. The total AB sales area for the proposed petition is 49,660.14 square feet, which contains 41,937.48 square feet indoor and 7,722.66 square feet outdoor. The site is showing a total of 124 parking spaces. 64 of them are onsite and 60 offsite per Design Exception 1-16-19. And the site requires a total of 148 parking spaces, which is a 16% reduction. The proposed AB sales, I'm sorry, the proposed AB sales hours are listed as Monday through Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m., with no AB sales prior to 11:00 a.m. on Sundays. This property is along a mixed-use corridor village and requires 250 feet from residential uses and 250 feet from other AB sales establishments. The site plan states that the sales area shall not be located within a parking or loading area or space, and all permits issued after April 1st, 2011 shall be kept on-site, a copy of the adopted ordinance and associated site plan for alcoholic beverage sales permit. The waivers before you tonight come from Section 27-132, and that's to reduce the required distance separation to residential uses from 250 feet to 91 feet. And 27, Section 27-283.7, and it's to reduce the required number, number of parking spaces from 148 to 124 spaces. Again, a 16% reduction. The closest residential use that's listed for the 250 feet is located at 2002 North Grady Street. It's zoned RS50, and it's 91 feet away. There were no AB sales establishments within 250 feet. Hart Route typically runs weekdays from 5:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m. and weekends from 6:00 a.m. to 10:36 p.m. The property is located in the West Shore Overlay District and subject to Section 27-238. Land Development did, did find, I'm sorry, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination did find it inconsistent, and that's due to the distance separation requirement for residential uses, as well as the reduction in the parking spaces. Transportation Planning also found it inconsistent due to the reduction in the parking. Code criteria for council reference and consideration come from 27-43 definitions. Alcoholic beverage sales as a large venue, it's defined as a commercial establishment with more than 299 person occupancy, which sells alcohol. The AB classification listed as beer and wine consumption on premises and package sales off premises consumption. Also listed are the proposed uses as restaurant, microbrewery, and warehouse. Section 27-129 General Standards lists, are there for your reference, as well as Section 27-132 Regulations Governing Individual Special Uses. Here's a vicinity map of the area. You have Spruce Tree, Spruce and North Grady outlined in red. Let's type this up, too. Here's the closest residential, which is directly north of the property. That's listed in the staff report at RS50, and you can see the RS50 zoning with the CI and the CI here. Top picture is the front of the structure off of Spruce, and this is a, the lower picture is showing the entrance to the parking area. Top picture kind of shows the more zoomed-in picture of the parking area that's already existing there. And this is the subject site looking over Grady Street, so you can see there's some, there's some buffering. Here's Grady Avenue looking south, and a west view on Spruce Street. There's an east view on Spruce, and below is the 2002 North Grady Street, which is the closest residential. Where I was standing was directly on the sidewalk in front of this subject property. The last photo here shows 4005 West Spruce Street, and that's the address that's approved through Design Exception 1-16-19 for the offsite parking. It's across the crosswalk in the vicinity right here. Site plan was included in the staff report for your review, as well as the hard copies. And the site plan also had the floor plan. This floor plan is in construction services right now, and that's where we got the occupancy, because that's what they're going through permitting for. I also provided a marked up site plan that will have some corrections that will be required, such as the site data table that apparently was just left off when they had corrections after our DRC meeting, and some other minor corrections to the site plan that would be required. TPD did provide a staff report, and they had no objections to this request. And staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Julia Mandel with the Law from McGray Robinson, 401 East Jackson Street, and I'm here representing Cigar City Brewery for the application that's in front of you. I will be asking Justin Clark, who is this Chief Operating Officer of Cigar City, to discuss their change in their plans and their change in their business model to include a restaurant, but I just want to go through a few things before I ask him to speak. As Ryan indicated, this was the subject, and some of you may remember, of an alcohol beverage permit, special use that during that period of time was really kind of a new model of a brewery with a tasting room in Tampa, so that went through some growing pains, but ultimately it's turned out to be obviously very successful, and Cigar City is now, now one of the greatest representations of Tampa as you leave the area along with, along with Cuban sandwiches. But I think it is important to understand the difference between the old alcohol permit and the new alcohol permit, because if you look at just the application on its face, it seems as if it's a very extravagant expansion of what is currently there, and that's actually not the case. The previous approved application was done in a very interesting way, say the least, and I'm going to go ahead and show it on the element, we call it an element, I don't even know what we call it. And what you're seeing here is this area is really the existing tasting room, and this is part of the existing special use alcohol area. Then there is a, I guess a sidewalk area, which is out, in the outside area, that goes into a cafe area and a very serpentine area under which alcohol sales and consumption was allowed under this old application. Oh, here's one that's actually shown that's highlighted. And as you can tell from this, the old alcohol beverage approval did not include the entire building, and that was at the time done for probably a lot of purposes, but it was really just trying to accommodate where the tours are, and so at that point in time, that's where the tours were happening, and, you know, technically if somebody strayed outside of the tour area and they were holding a beer, there may be an issue. So in going through this application process, it was thought that the better approach would be to actually include the entire existing building in that wet zone area in order to accommodate tours that may go in certain areas. You will see though on the, on the site plan as it stands today, that the area where the restaurant's going to be is in approximately the same location as the tasting room is today, and the rest of the uses are designated directly on the site plan, so although it's a, it looks like a very large expansion, it really isn't, it's just accommodating what's existing today and delineating those uses. And what this alcohol beverage application really is doing is allowing the opportunity to change the existing tasting room into a restaurant and to accommodate a kitchen, and as a result of that, and adding approximately 1,200 square feet of restaurant space into the existing area, it required us to go through a new alcohol beverage application as well as creating a change of use which also required compliance with the West Shore Overlay, so that's what's in commercial site plan review night, right now for determination of certain upgrades to the property to be in compliance with, with the West Shore Overlay requirements. The other changes on the site plan you will see relate directly to sales hours, and the sales hours as they previously were at the time were done in order to assure the community would be comfortable with this use, and what we're simply asking for, it's a little bit confused on the site plan and also on the way it's drafted on the site plan is really to be in compliance with Chapter 14, which has been the norm over time, and I know that it was part of previous councils' norm, but has been the norm over time to just be in compliance with those requirements. It is in Cigar City Brewing's intent, brewery's intent to go ahead and expand those hours, but being in compliance with Chapter 14, and that is actually stated on the site plan, is their intent? I think what's really important here is that this new site plan is more clear and concise and will allow the expansion of this use and will be better in line with what the neighborhood wants, and you can see that there is no neighborhood opposition, because this would create a restaurant more than just a tasting room, and that is really where I think Cigar City would like to go with their business model. At this point in time, I'm going to go ahead and ask if Justin Clark can go ahead and get up and describe that model, and then I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Justin Clark, 210 South Woodland Avenue, Tampa, Florida, 33609. Cigar City Brewing opened our doors in 2009, we started in a time where small craft breweries was really something new for the city of Tampa. I'm excited to say that they're much more prevalent now, and if Cigar City Brewing has helped shine a light on Tampa, we're delighted to have us placed a small piece in Tampa's history. We have been in front of city council before, I think Councilman Miranda would remember when we've had full rooms on both sides of what we were trying to do. And as, as we continue to grow, that is why we're here today, and I'm proud to see that, you know, there hasn't been any opposition that has been presented to council, and I do not see any this evening. As previously stated, we are simply trying to change our use to our premise so that we may add a kitchen. We are growing up and we need to keep up with the ever-changing market. Cigar City Brewing is very fortunate, the reach that our brand has. We are internationally known, and we distribute our Tampa-made products to 33 states currently, and it'll be about 38 by the end of this year. We're currently ranked the fourth best brewery in the world on RateBeer.com, and this past year we have won two medals at the Great American Beer Festival. When people come to visit, they're able to leave here with a Tampa-made product. It's exciting that our brand has been able, has been used in bets by the city, and we're very proud of that fact, as fact as the city must be proud of us. We constantly pinch ourselves that we're mentioned in conversations about Tampa with the likes of McDill, Busch Gardens, The Riverwalk, The Tampa Bay Lightning. We're asking for a parking waiver today, but it's important to note the changes our area has seen since the last time we were up here and since we opened our doors in 2009. We have not just one apartment and condo locations in our area, but multiple have been built, so for residents to call home, along with the residents that have been there in Carver City and Lincoln Gardens for many, many years. In fact, we're the very first bicycle-friendly business in the West Shore District, and one of the very first in Tampa, a distinction that we've been very proud of since we earned it in 2015. We're proud to say that there are now four in the West Shore District. This morning I rode my bike in the mayor's Bike to Work Day, and it was rewarding to hear Cigar City Brewing called to the front for the photo op of the bicycle-friendly businesses in the change that we're adapting as the city of Tampa is adapting. We also have an official Uber and Lyft drop-off point adapting to the change as our commuters travel to and from our business, and I, and I think that shows the reduced need for parking. We continue to evolve with the customer. We give approximately 10,000 tours a year, with the change of use, we're going to be able to add a kitchen and enhance that experience that our international and domestic guests enjoy. We are also going to add 50 full-time and part-time jobs to join the 59 full-time jobs that we have now along with three part-time. We are excited to bring another option for our guests and the neighborhood. By opening the kitchen, we will have something else for the locals and tourists besides our wonderful award-winning beers. We have two locations at our fabulous Tampa International Airport, and of course the one location at Spruce Street that we're speaking of tonight. We have continued to invest in Tampa, and we are asking that Tampa continues to make it easy for us and others to do business in the area. I hope that you will vote in favor of our application today, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, any questions or comments from council? Councilman Dingfelder?
Just a couple, one thing, on the staff report, it looks like perhaps there's a typo, it says Belmar Shores Civic Association as a participating organization, that sounds off.
Ryan Manassi, Planning, Design and Development Coordination, so what's listed, the applicant has to search for the organizations for our application, and what you typically do is you go to our website, Land Development Coordination, you type in the folio, and they provide you a list of participating organizations, although it sounds like it's off, there are organizations listed under some of these addresses like that, and this was my search that I conducted for the staff report, and when I typed the folio number in, these were the participating organizations.
But I don't know what that means then, what's a participating organization? I thought it needs to be within a certain?
No, they register, there's?
That just means they are interested and they want to be notified of everything?
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department, yes.
So do they have, do they have any standing, just for, for future reference? Yeah, Belmar Shores is down southwest or toward Gandy.
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department, no, the city would not concede that that provides them any sort of legal standing, however, it was city council's desire at the time to expand the notice opportunities for, beyond just the neighborhood associations that were in the notice area to those who had elected to participate, so that was a city council choice, and that's what the code says, and that's what's followed.
Yeah, I mean, I'm off of notice, and it's great, it's just a little weird that it's listed actually on the report, being that it's, you know, 10 miles away. Okay, so back to more serious questions. I do recall, I do believe it was the first, the first time this thing ever came, this project ever came to council, and I do recall that, and there was a huge uproar from the neighborhood, and they were worried it was going to be a 42,000 or 49,000 square foot strip joint, and, and I basically told them that that was silly, and they got mad at me, but ultimately this has been a great success, and I commend Mr. Redner and everybody else involved. But going to this specific petition, the overflow, or the parking issue, I thought you guys have overflow across the street, and is that allowable for this?
Ryan Manassi, Plan, Design, Development Coordination, so I pointed out in the staff report, as well as I have it here, it's the design exception where they have offsite parking, that's where the city recognizes those offsite parkings at a separate location. They meet a legal agreement, a lease agreement, for like typically five years, they have to be within 1,000 feet, but that was explained as design exception 1-16-19, so I do have a copy here, if you'd like me to present it.
No, but just give it, tell me in a nutshell what, what you're saying, then, you're saying?
It was broken down, as I previously stated, so they have 124 parking spaces that the city recognizes, 64 of those are onsite and the other 60 are through the design exception 1-16-19. They still, they're, they're still insufficiently parked though.
How much are they short then?
They are short, they require 148 spaces, so it's a 16% reduction, so they require, they have 124 and they, they have, they require 148.
Okay, and this says 135, so what's that, is that on the page three?
There's a typo in the site data table that the, their, the site plan that was submitted to me completely excluded the site data table that was originally on, so that was just a typo, and that'll be corrected between first and second reading to reflect the total required parking spaces at 148, that provided as 124, 64 onsite and 60 through the design exception.
All right, thank you very much.
Anything further from council? And sir, did you have anything first?
Yes, sir, if I may, I would just like to have some clarification, so in the staff report I did depict the hours of operation because they are stated on the site plan, even though it states consistent with Chapter 14, which the listed hours are consistent with Chapter 14, it specifically lists Monday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m., and no AB sales prior to 11:00 a.m. on Sundays. I would just, I kind of need one or the other, whether it be consistent with Chapter 14, or we're going to hold them to these hours that are listed on the site plan.
Counselor?
We are, we're comfortable complying with just Chapter 14.
Anything further, counsel?
And for the record, we'll make that change between first and second reading to remove the hours and just leave the statement consistent with Chapter 14, as well as the other changes which staff has requested that are made between first and second reading, we would request your approval with those changes, thank you.
Anything further, counsel? Okay, and I, and I wanted to join in with Councilman Dingfelder's comments of no bearing or relevancy to this application, but just that Cigar City Brewing, just a magnificent Tampa company that we all should be proud of, regardless of our findings here tonight.
Thank you very much for saying so.
Yes, sir, thank you. Is anyone here from the public here to discuss or address publicly item number four, so please come forward.
Second.
We have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and I believe, councilman, were you next? Okay, if you don't mind taking this one, sir.
Before I read this, I just want to say, I've represented this district for the last four years, and not once have I received any complaint about Cigar City, period. And I remember when it was the issue that came up before I got elected on the tasting room, and I don't know which council member mentioned, but they said they never, they had never seen so many emails in support of something, so I think it's a gem, when people come to Tampa, you hear them talk about the Columbia, you hear them talk about Burns, all the usual places, but I hear them talk about Cigar City a lot, you know, people from out of the country, people that specifically will take their family to Disney World, and they make a trip to Tampa just to go to Cigar City. I believe it was a family from Germany that did that, and I heard them say that. So anyways, I appreciate you being in the district I represent and in this community, you know, you've, you've done very well. So having said that, I have an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance approving a special use permit as two for alcoholic beverage sales, large venue consumption on premises and package sales off premises consumption, and making lawful the sale of beer and wine at or from that certain lot, plot or tract of land located at 3924 West Spruce Street, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in Section 3, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed, repealing ordinance number 2012-92, providing effective date, and any changes between now and second reading that was, was brought up by the applicant.
Thank you, sir, we have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption to be held on June 27, 2019, at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you, okay, now we go to Councilman Citro, did you?
Now that we're off the record?
Oh, yes, sir.
Justin, could you ask Mr. Redner to consider brewing a ginger beer?
You should ask Mr. Clark, he has a lot more power than me, he actually gets things done.
We, we have used that in our over 1,000 unique beers that we brewed to date, but I think it would, to celebrate this occasion, I think we should try something new very soon.
Non-alcohol, please.
We've, if I may take a moment, we're actually experimenting with a yeast that will allow us to do some, any products, so we'll keep you posted.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
You betcha, and thank you again. Okay, now we go to motions and whatnot, Councilman Dingfelder, if any, sir.
Thank you, and, and now that we're out of that public hearing, I wanted to say hello to our former city attorney, and thank you for your service over the many years, and welcome, welcome back, good to see you. There you go. Okay, in regard to future business, this morning I made reference to a workshop on resiliency, and then my brain wasn't resilient and I forgot, but anyway, so I'd like to schedule that for later in the summer, shall we, maybe August or even September or something?
What were you looking for, sir, a workshop?
A workshop.
Your next workshop day after June is?
Well, I'm thinking about August.
August, it would be August the 29th.
Okay, so I'll move August 29th to request a report from our, any, any staff that the, our chief of staff believes would be appropriate, as well as inviting outside agencies that, that our staff, when I chatted with them earlier today, they said EPC might want to participate, county emergency managements with, et cetera, so I'll, I'll leave that up to them if they want to invite some outside agencies to join us and participate in the beginning of an extremely important subject on resiliency, with the general topic of what we can, what we can do as a community to be more resilient, and specifically what we, what code provisions we might want to start exploring and investigating to address future resiliency issues, so that's a motion.
Thank you, sir, we have, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything further?
And the second?
I'm sorry, should we set that for 9:00 a.m. or just?
Sure, 9:00 a.m.
8:29, 9:00 a.m.
No, that's fine.
And the second item kind of was triggered tonight by this question of Chapter 14 and 3:00 a.m. And, and just very briefly, it dawned on me as we go, as we went through this exercise that we start out that the standard is Chapter 14, which references 3:00 a.m., but then, if we want to stray from the standard, we have to back off of that. Well, it's our code, it's our Chapter 14, why don't, why don't we consider addressing in a workshop with plenty of staff and community input, making our standard perhaps midnight, and if somebody wants to come in and stray from that standard, then they would have to justify going further into the late evening. And the reason I say that is, very often these? And the reason I say that is, very often, these issues, especially when you're... Come up residential, commercial, butting up against each other, very often, this is a key issue that has to get addressed, and it gets addressed over and over. But we're always, in my opinion, we're sort of working in the wrong direction. Everybody with me? Am I clear on that? So...
Is it the standard that, because of state law that way? I'm not sure.
Well, my guess would be that's why it became the standard, but I would think that as a local government, until Tallahassee preempts us, but as a local government, we have the ability to put in our own code midnight, and then we could go up to 3:00 a.m. if somebody wanted to exhibit good reasons why they justify going beyond midnight, or something like that. That's just my idea. I'd like to workshop that and any other A/B, you know, A/B issues.
Do you have a proposed date, sir?
I'd give them a fair amount of time to explore it. That same 8:29 sounds fine to me.
Okay.
You want to say what time? 10?
Well, council sets everything at 9:00 o'clock. Otherwise, the clerk puts down unknown.
Oh.
But that seems to work. That seems to have been working, so I would suggest 9:00 a.m.
And can we... Dwayne, did you get that down in terms of the summary of that?
Yeah, I mean, I can summarize it better.
The hours of...
Yeah, let me restate it, that we hold a workshop on alcoholic beverage A/B issues specifically as related to Chapter 14, specifically as related to hours of operation.
Further, did you want to qualify it as to your comment as to whether to create what in effect would be, let's say, a late-night permit? Or I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what I heard you say was, frankly, I believe that what you're talking about is the St. Pete model, but to give staff some sort of direction as to what you want them to start to look at in terms of direction...
Well, how about this, giving us options, including the St. Pete model, which I'm not familiar with, but giving us options to explore backing up off the 3:00 a.m. to somewhere else and, you know, leaving flexibility to go further.
Okay. Councilman Carlson?
You all may remember Yoli's proposal from a couple of years ago, which got panned, but it was a combination of putting it to midnight on the site plan with a business license after that. And I think the rollout of it, the explanation quickly caused a lot of opposition. But what I would ask, maybe friendly amendment or just clarification, is that we look at some combination of different choices besides just putting it all on the site plan, too.
Sure. Sure, I'd set that as a friendly amendment. I'm totally open to ideas, but I just think that we should explore this early, like, you know, early in this new administration. So, we're not always chasing the train on these issues and maybe keep some of these neighborhoods from having to come down here and even bother with this.
So, with that, I would second it.
Thank you, sir. And a well-thought-out motion. We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Carlson. All in favor? Any opposed? Anything further, sir?
No, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Goode's, anything, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to all the condolences from Tampa City Council to the family of Bartholomew Banks, the second, son of Prime Minister and Community Leader, Reverend Bartholomew, and Ms. Banks of St. John Progressive Mission and Baptist Church, who passed away on 5/19/2019. The condolences will be presented to his family at his home-going celebration on 5/25/19.
We have a motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor? Any opposed? And if I may, Councilman, that... Is that... Gosh, I have my date. Is that this Saturday?
December.
Okay. And what time was that at?
I believe it's at 11:00 o'clock. I believe. I'll give my... I believe it's at 11:00 o'clock.
Okay, good. Because I know we were... There was a statement also as to the funeral, but we'll get it down.
I got it. I got a few more.
Thank you, sir.
Got a few more. Next one, and this is to our own house. I would like to make a motion to offer condolences from Tampa City Council to the family of George James Fox, brother of our city clerk Shirley Fox Knowles, who passed away on 5/20/19. As a president and CEO of Tax Doctrine and Income Services, he was recognized as Professional of the Year for contributions and achievements in the field of finance by Straightboards, who's the Who's Who worldwide publication. The date and time of this presentation is to be determined.
We have a motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor? Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to give a commendation to the National Association of Realtors Brokers Tampa Chapter on June 20/19/2019 at the City Council Workshop for their influence role in implementation of equal rights for fair housing and equal opportunity at local and state and federal levels. As June is National Home Ownership Month, I would like to invite them to make a short presentation on the importance of increasing minority homeownership.
We have a motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor? Any opposed? Anything further?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the last one is really deeply to my heart. As you know, we had a public servant who lost his life last weekend, and I would like to make a motion to give a commendation to Thomas Lee Dunn, posthumously. He is the Heartline Bus Driver who passed away on May 19/2019 during an unfortunate act of senseless violence while in the commission of his job duties. His action of heroism and bravery will never be forgotten. This commendation will be presented to his family on Saturday, 5/25, at his memorial service.
We have a motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, sir. And I always, by the way, when I do... I'm just going to say this. When I first got to council, I always used to feel bad about doing two or three motions that didn't think I'm taking up people's time. Man, you all make motions. That's your God-given right. Just saying that.
Next one?
28. Councilman Maniscalco.
None, thank you.
None, okay. Councilman Citron?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Miranda?
Chairman, I've got 16 of us.
Keep it coming.
Chairman, I'd like to request that the legal department move that council set a workshop of not more than two hours to discuss land uses on our next workshop day on June 20/19 at 1:30 in the afternoon. They need to talk to us.
We have a second.
When is it?
June 19 at 1:30.
And let me say, if I may, we have a second on that, that I would strongly encourage everyone... I'm going to go, I believe I'm in town that day. I'm going to go because the things that we don't know about these land use hearings, and I include myself in there, I'm an attorney. I've never done land use in my life. I have no interest. But, and I've been here for two and a half years, but the things I don't know could fill up Roman Coliseum. So, I plan on going, and I would just encourage, because, you know, one mistake that we make could cost the city a lot in attorney's fees. And the what? Who knows? Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second, was it Councilman Goode or Maniscalco? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
One other thing, and I have no motion on this, but when we see things here like the lots that we're using for parking areas and this, that, and the other, and you see a nice building and a beautiful one car here, one car there, no other cars, but it doesn't tell us at what time of day that was taken. As a police officer and as a criminologist, I can tell you that it has a different effect on you. I like to see those shots taken, the time recorded at the time they took the shot.
And that is... And that's not a motion? Can we make it like a memo?
No, that's not a motion. I just want to get it, and I'll make it a motion later date. I just not prepared to make it today. But I've seen this for years, and it never tells us the date. And when you talk about alcohol zoning and the parking related to it being somewhere else, what happens when that lot is sold? They stay with the license, and you're out in the street.
Thank you, sir. Councilman...
I'll put it to motion later on sometime.
Yes, sir. Anything else, Councilman Miranda?
That's it, sir.
Okay, Councilman Carlson? Thank you. And if I may, pass the gavel. I make a...
You just... From the 20th? I got the 20th there. Okay, I said the 19th.
And if I made a mistake, I made one other than, more than I made before. The workshop's set for June 19.
Can you get this one?
One at the 20th. I know you want it. It's the 20th. He said I said the 19th, so I said it again, see if I caught you, and I didn't catch you. For June 20th.
Are you guys married or something?
Tomato, tomato.
At 1:30 p.m.
Okay, we have the amended motion by Councilman Miranda, which was seconded by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and then...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just to follow up on the importance of that meeting, that is your regular workshop day, and it is a 1:30, no more than two hours, but it's also going to be in this room.
Yes, thank you, sir. I'm also going to make a motion for a workshop, you know, and I'm just going to say this, the last week in working with this administration on two issues that I hadn't seen a lot of movement on, which is Bush, Fowler, the USF area, both of these, I have just been delighted on some of the interest that we've seen, some of the things that we've seen on Fowler that I had to leave council early this morning for discussion on that with the mayor, Mr. Sharp, and others, is just wonderful. We'll be dealing with that later on. But then Bush Boulevard also had another meeting yesterday with administration and some individuals on Bush Boulevard, and just the level of interest, I'm encouraged by it, and I'm naive, but I'm encouraged by it. So, I'm happy for that, obviously. And I'd like to motion to have a workshop to discuss Bush Boulevard, in particular, land use, transportation, crime code enforcement issues in Bush Boulevard, terrorist park area. I was going to do that on August 29th. That may be a little bit jammed, which is 100% fine. There's no immediate rush. I never pay attention to these things before coming chair. How many items typically do we have in a workshop?
On the 29th of August, you have a commendation of Police Officer of the Month. Then you had a workshop to further discuss adjusting the minimum parking requirements in downtown Tampa.
Yeah, let's do it another day.
And then, and then, no, no, no. I didn't... The other one, you just added you added the resiliency.
Yeah, so that's...
So, you only have one commendation and two subjects.
Chapter 14.
Okay, okay.
Oh, you added Chapter 14 as well to that date. That was August. So, that's Chapter 14.
Counsel, have any thoughts on adding that? I'm...
Can I make a clarification or friendly amendment? As I've said before, I think Bush Boulevard is our gateway to the world. It's our front door to the international people that come here. If you didn't mention it, can we add beautification and branding?
Oh, yeah, of course. Yeah, no, that's part of it with the land use and development. Yeah, so that's one of the things that we actually discussed yesterday. That's a big issue on the agenda there. So, if I may, I make... So, it's August 29th?
Well, actually, August 29th, we also added the Chapter 14 discussion. So, you actually have the commendation, the parking incentive business district, resiliency, and Chapter 14. You have nothing right now set on the September workshop, but that's a ways away. You only have the two commendations for Police Officer of the Month.
Okay, yeah.
5/5 of the floor.
Then we'll do it that day. What the heck?
And I'll second every one.
Thank you, sir.
The 26th of September, then, at 9:00 a.m.?
August 29th.
Excuse me. August 29th.
Yes.
9:00 a.m. All right, I have a motion of Councilman Deere, a second from Councilman Carlson. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, sir?
No, just a second, Councilman Goode's. I didn't know about Shirley's brother. I had no idea. Did any... Did it was... I was going to say, I didn't know. What a nice, prominent lady in the community. I had no idea, so God bless her. Okay, motion to receive and file?
Given.
Oh, and Mr. Demay, did you?
I just want to say something real quick. I know you're busy and it's late, and we want to get going, but the first hearing, the first group, the first person that spoke tonight concerning the housing situation in Tampa, we have a housing crisis going on, affordable housing crisis, I should say. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because I did want to say it at the time, but I wanted